We'll call the meeting. Do we have, are we, we're okay? We'll call the meeting to order. We'll probably need a roll call to get it started.
Just the volume.
We're getting a little echo here, so just hold on for one second. Okay, so everybody hear me? We good? Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. We have a roll call. Everybody's here. Did they need to identify themselves for the roll call here? I believe I can say everybody's here and we should be good. Okay, have everybody here, including our student representatives? And then additions to the agenda? I don't see any. Then next is approval of the agenda. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion from Cheryl?
A second.
Thomas, you're second? Okay, so any further discussion?
Bruce, you, okay, I'll, I'll take care.
Ashley?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Rick?
Rick?
Here. Thomas?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Will you hit mute again, Bruce? Cheryl?
Hi.
It's everyone. Okay, I'll go back on. Next is public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
I have no.
Okay, so then we'll move to the next one. We're at the consent agenda.
I would like, I would like to ask that item C1 be removed for a separate vote.
Okay, we'll remove item C1, which will follow the consent agenda and the first item, following the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. And then any further discussion? Then we have to have a roll call vote again. Are you going to do them?
I just wanted to, I wanted to comment.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
I did go in and check the bills today. Matt was nice enough to go in and let me in. I noticed there was a bill for roofing architects, so we're going to be doing some more roofing projects, which was already pre-approved, but everything is underway for everything and they're working on everything at the school. It's wonderful. I love it. New Chromebooks came in, a large number of them, so we're replacing as we phase out Chromebooks and construction costs are just starting. The fees and whatnot are being paid. Other than that, everything was business as usual. It was nice to see. It was so easy to go through and everything was so clear. Thank you.
Okay. Then Matt, I'll turn it back to you for any, anything else? I don't see any. Okay, Matt?
Ashley?
Wait, what am I, what am I agreeing to? The consent agenda minus C1?
Correct.
Okay, hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Consent agenda is approved.
Okay, then we'll move to the second item, which is the C1 that we removed. And it is
You're on mute, Bruce.
Bruce is on mute. We can't hear.
Just give me a couple, a minute or two here while my computer.
Hang on one second. We're on hold for a moment. Okay. Okay, so we're back. So we have the last item in the consent agenda, non-renewal of the head coaching assignment for Phil Carlson, and we're looking for a motion and a second.
Make motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion from Thomas.
A second.
Was that a second from you, Jacob?
Yeah.
Not a lot. Okay, a second from Jacob. Any further discussion? No additional discussion. We'll have the roll call vote.
Ashley?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Rick?
No.
Hi.
Did you call my name? Matt, you're, you're frozen.
Can you hear anything?
Maggie?
Hi.
Cheryl?
No.
Bruce?
Hi. Then we are onto the next item, which is communication items. Okay, and Matt, I'm going to just turn it over to you. I'll get
All right, I have three items. First of all, commencement. I believe Mr. Orline was sending an email out to board members today. If you didn't receive it today, it'll probably come out tomorrow. He is going to be emailing board members as far as assistance needed with commencement. If board members can just take a look at that email, if you are available to help out, that would be great. Obviously commencement is different this year than it has been in past years and I don't know exactly what all roles he will need assisted with, but if you take a look at that email, please let him know if you can help out. Excuse me, also, all board members are invited to join the all staff that will be lining the sidewalk on the west side of the building with appropriate social distancing to congratulate the graduates. So if it's something that doesn't work out as far as helping out or filling a role, please know all board members are invited as, as part of Painesville area school staff to participate in that as well. So look for that. And if you could let Mr. Orline know if you can help out, that'd be great. Strategic planning 2.0. I have been patiently waiting to be able to pick up where we left off in March. March 14th, our staff, all employees went through strategic planning sessions here. The next step was on the 16th and 23rd, I believe it was, excuse me, it was February 14th that staff participated. It was March 16th to March 23rd were the days that we were anticipating running community sessions. Those obviously got impacted. I'm to the point where I think we just need to do probably a online or virtual planning session. I don't believe it's ideal, but I also, it's important that we move this process forward. So part of our administrative meeting tomorrow is going to be talking about this very topic. Look for something by the end of the week as far as kind of a draft game plan for strategic planning. If all board members could just take a look at it and provide any feedback or thoughts on it, it would be greatly appreciated. I do anticipate that I'll also be visiting with Bruce Miles. I don't know if board members know who Bruce is, but Bruce does strategic planning for school districts. He also works in the private sector with long-term and short-term business planning. Bruce has been doing some virtual strategic planning sessions that have been larger scale and geared more towards community. So I just want to pick his brain too, as far as how he thinks that's going and what his thoughts are on that. But I really would like by June 30th to have a draft strategic plan in front of the board. Last item is school supply collection. Mary and David have been kind of working on this process and what it's going to look like. I think the, the seniors will probably, won't be any issue as far as collecting supplies. They are coming in and getting their commencement items taken care of, so I'm not worried about that. We do have supplies that we need to collect throughout all the grade levels, and so we're, we're looking at getting some options out to people. I think we're going to have an evening at the elementary school that have been communicated with families. We'll also possibly have some, be able to use our satellite meal locations as a collection point if need be. So there's going to be a variety of options for people and, and we'll just have to work with the unique circumstances and, and work with people to be able to get school supplies back. I do believe our eighth graders will have the option of just keeping their Chromebooks. Originally, we were talking about collecting those. We were going to collect eighth grade Chromebooks and senior Chromebooks. We've kind of changed direction on that a little bit. Eighth graders will have the option to keep their Chromebook if they want. If families don't want it, they certainly can turn it in if they would rather us have it over the summer versus them. And obviously when the seniors are coming in for commencement and stuff, we will collect their, their Chromebooks as well. So that's kind of where things are at with school supplies. If you have families or community members that are asking questions, our intent is to be as flexible as we possibly can with this. So just encourage them to contact Mary or David or myself and, and we can come up with, with a solution and as far as helping them out and getting school supplies collected. Those are the three items that I have. The other stuff is mostly facility related, but we're going to talk about that in the agenda. Any questions for me? So let's move on then to the first item in the agenda with the policy review. This is a second reading. There are no changes from the first reading, just as a refresher. The board is going to approve policies 532, 533, and 534. The attachment that was provided was from the policy committee. Real quickly, just a 10,000-foot overview. 532 is use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs. Again, this was the stuff that talked about seclusion rooms. Painesville area schools doesn't operate any seclusion rooms, but the language that's in there would be compliant with state statute, so we will just adopt MSBA's boilerplate language. 533 is our wellness policy. This wellness policy is brand new. It does focus on the new goals that are established by state statute. And so we are essentially getting rid of our existing wellness policy and adopting a new one. The next step with this will be the logistical implementation of it, and we have some other wellness initiatives as well that are going to be implemented along the way. And 534, this is a policy that the district has had for the last several years. It's food service meal charge policies. We've actually, the policy committee worked on this to be able to modify this, to get rid of our lunch account procedures. There's enough detail now in the policy that the, the procedures as to how we will operate are spelled out in the policy. I think it just cleans everything up and gives one place for people to go to if they have questions about how we charge for meals or how we handle negative accounts. So those are the three policies that are changing, and it was the policies committee to recommend that they be approved.
So do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
We have a motion from Rick?
A second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
All right, here we go. Ashley?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Then we'll go to BTE, but I'm going to again go back and we'll let Matt take care of the rest of that.
Go for it.
Okay, so let's talk about budget. I am going to just want to get this spreadsheet pulled up. Okay, so this is, I think, our third or fourth conversation about budget. If you are at the link or have the link available, this is a snapshot of where we are at today. Well, it was a snapshot where we were at before about eight o'clock AM today. So we were anticipating roughly the general fund unassigned would be a deficit budget of about $57,593. There's some moving parts to this. The biggest moving part is what is included in this is taking our network administrator, which currently we were sharing with New London Spicer. We had three days of network administrator. New London Spicer had two days, and we were taking that network administrator and bringing that person on full-time five days a week. My preference would be to have that person in Painesville four days a week and be able to sell a portion of that contract to a neighbor school, to a private business. I would be open to any partner. Originally, I didn't get any interest from area districts as far as having any interest, and so that's why that position is fully in this budget. There's been some turnover over at BBE, and now they are going to be exploring what they're going to be doing as far as their network setup. So I did talk with them this morning, and they have an interest of purchasing about 20% of our network administrators' contract. One day a week is essentially what the conversation was. If that is something that goes forward, that would trim about another $20,000 off of that, that deficit budget. So we'd be looking at about $37,000, $38,000 deficit budget. I just want to highlight a couple of other things on here. Does anybody have any questions up to this point, or can I keep going? And, okay, I might keep going and I'll keep asking if there are questions, though. As we go down the general fund, the assigned accounts are, are pretty straightforward. When we get to the gala grant, I did ask Carrie to put this line item in here, just so we have an easier way to track the dollars that come in through that. Typically, we don't necessarily put grants on here because a lot of times grants aren't annual funding, but I do think that the way the gala agreement is set up, it does make some sense. The thing that we just need to be mindful of right now, interest rates are not very good as far as turning around endowment investments. So just, we, we just have to be mindful of planning for that on a year in and year out basis. Right now, there's about $30,000 available that would be interest potentially that the district could apply for grants. It would be my intention to go through the application process and get that CTE work group involved in that. And so that's why you see that that's a dollar in and dollar out line item. We're expecting 33,000 is what's in here. I think more closely, it would be 30,000. We'd expect 30,000 in revenue. We expect 30,000 in expenditures. The Dylan Endowment, again, that is $50,000 annually. We are anticipating spending all of that $50,000 next year. We did end last year with a, or the, yes, last year with about $2,400 in there. I am anticipating that next year we would spend all $50,000. The PawPacks program, so this is run out of our elementary school. These are PawPacks that are put together with meals and food over the weekend for families that are, are in need of that. We recently received notice that the Painesville area community foundation was going to be awarding us a grant for that program. We are anticipating it, it's roughly $5,500 to $6,000 is what we run in expenditures each year. We would like to expand that. Right now, it's just really focusing on our K5 families. It'd be great to expand it to K8 for sure and potentially expand it to K12. I believe at this present time, there are about just shy of 60 families, I think, that are participating in that program. Are designated for facilities funds. This, we can, can look at some of these projects. But first, before we do that, are there any questions up to that point? And then we'll get into these facility pieces. I'm not seeing any questions, so I'm going to move forward. Okay? All right, so let's look at designated for facilities. If you just click on that link there, we can, you can see kind of where the designated for facilities dollars would be going. We would plan on the fiber runs. So with the building project, we will have a fiber pit that's going to be installed for the easiest geographical marker out there. If you can just division where the ticket booth is at the main entrance on the west side of the, the football field, the northwest corner, where that ticket booth usually sits, just a little bit to the north of that is where the fiber pit's going to be installed from the facility project. So since that crew's going to be out installing that pit there, it does make some sense for us to run those fiber runs from there to the baseball field, to the football press box, and then we would run it over to where we are anticipating our softball grandstand to go in as well. And then it's simply there, and when that part of a project is completed, it would just be a tie-in. Cafeteria tables are for the high school. Lightspeed, that is our, part of our filtering tool and our network authentication. That's basically the, the piece of software that when a, a computer goes onto our network and somebody puts in their username and password, Lightspeed is what recognizes them as a student or a staff and assigns them what rights they have within our network. The key fob at the elementary and high school is in here, along with the security camera upgrades at the high school, elementary school, and out at the baseball field. And then there's also some furniture in here for the middle school lobby. So that'd be right when you come in by door eight. That's where that would be, the high school office, and then the student center, which would be the old high school media center. There are some furniture allowances in there. For the grand total of 324, 807 is what the expenditures on designated for facilities would be. Questions at all on designated for facilities? Okay. Let's keep plugging down the list. You can see our OPEB dollars, our OPEB is post-employment benefits. So the auditor comes in each year and, and basically tells us what we have to set aside for post-employment benefits. So that's where that 410,589 is coming from. Again, that's going to be cash in, cash out, as far as what the auditor is, is telling us we need to have set aside. You can see our QCOM dollars, our revenue's about $155,000 a year. Our expenditures have fluctuated a little bit. We did onboard PBIS at the elementary school, and so that's where those deficits are coming from. They are spending that fund balance down a little bit. That was part of the QCOM committee's plan, was to onboard PBIS at the elementary school and be able to tap into these dollars for the trainings, for the substitute teacher cost, for the travel, professional development and the such. I anticipate that's going to continue because our secondary building is going to be getting into a cohort as well at some point, and so I would think we would use the same rationale that we did with the elementary school. When you get into the restricted accounts, many of these are, are dollar in, dollar out. So all of these are, are monies that are generated based on a state formula, but they're geared towards a specific cause. And so that's why we spend them all. These are, these are funds we can't carry over, so these should be our first dollars spent. We just have to make sure we spend them for the right purpose. I do want to bring your attention to the safe schools. Part of what we talked about doing as far as additions in the district was adding some social emotional learning programming throughout K12. This is a portion where this is, is right now embedded. So if you look at line 17 and that's safe school expenses, you see SEL coordinator. This is a one-year funding source. The $38,986, that was our one-time safe school money that we were awarded. Next year, we won't have those funds. So the district's plan moving forward is to complete a ADSS application, which is an alternative delivery system to prevent early identification and special ed, is what ADSS is all about. And so what we would do is, is move this SEL piece into our ADSS grant. That is funded, it's a 50/50 cost share from the, the state. So any positions that we put in this ADSS grant, that we are targeting positions to be able to try to prevent special education referrals, those positions then are funded 50% by the state, 50% by the district. It's a pretty good deal for schools to, to get involved in that. The rest of those, if you look at those other expenditures, those are expenditures that we, we would see on an annual basis. You can see the first one on there is liaison officer. We do anticipate, I did have a conversation with Paul Wagner, we do anticipate the liaison officer program to be very similar to last year. It was roughly three days a week is what the officers were in school, and there would be no, no increase to that contract. It would be the, the same value as it was this year. increase to that contract. It would be the the same value as it was this year. Any questions with safe schools or any of those assigned accounts? Okay. Let's keep going. The only other, the other ones I want to just bring your attention to is the the food service. You can see we are in a deficit next year. Part of that is we, if we continue growing that surplus, the state is just going to recoup it. We got to notice this year that if we didn't spend down $16,000 out of our food service account, the state was just simply going to take it back from us. They withhold it from your general fund allocation is how they take it back. So there's a certain percentage of your gross revenue that the state says is appropriate to have a fund balance. And so you can see there's going to be some ebb and flow there. And the reality is if we continue doing what we're doing, we're going to end up losing revenue because the state is just going to withhold it. It's an interesting problem because each late summer, the state usually gets the notice from the feds as far as what those meal prices need to be set at. Well, we have to keep inching towards what that federal reimbursement rate is. Even though we can demonstrate on paper that our program is funding itself, is paying for itself, we still have to close that gap from what we're being reimbursed for a free meal and what we're charging a full pay meal. So we're still in this cycle where we have a healthy fund balance. We wouldn't need to raise our meal prices. But the feds require us to raise our meal prices shows, so we can demonstrate that we're closing that gap between what we're charging full price and what reimbursement rate is. Doesn't necessarily make the most sense, but it's the system that's in place right now. Then I want to jump down to community ed. I just want to make sure, you know, community ed right now, you can see a lot of red. That is a preliminary budget with the state of how things are. There's, there's definite, definitely going to be deficits. We're also going to be looking at some stimulus dollars that aren't factored into this budget that may impact those numbers yet as well. Going down to operating capital. We can start with the twenty twenty one operating capital. Most of this is, I think we have this to a point now where you guys are going to see this budget is going to really roll over from year to year. We have digital curriculum stipends. I believe that'll be something that we'll continue to do each year. We'll have our first cohort of teachers participating into digital curriculum writing this summer. And the plan will continue to take a certain number of teachers each year and and do intense specified training over the summer and early fall as far as digital curriculum writing is concerned. Our copier agreement is in there, $25,000. That's a five year lease, so that will continue in there. Or excuse me, that is a service agreement. We have purchased our copiers outright. But we do contract with Loffler for service and for staples and toner and and that sort of equipment. The rest of these are things you're going to see just come back annually, web hosting. Our message service for Infinite Campus, our smart annual license, that's how we run payroll. Frontline is our substitute teacher calling application. So all of those things are just really logistical applications that we're using for day to day operations. And then if you go down to line thirty two and below, the software licenses, again, we're trying to make this a little more uniform with. These are the district approved software apps that we're going to really focus on intense training for educators and bring in professional development. That's not to say we can't explore other things, but these are the ones the district is going to be purchasing and we're going to try and maximize these uses as best we can. Our textbook curriculum cycle dollars are below as well. There's going to be a shift that's going to continue here. Rather than writing checks and send them to textbook publishers, we are wanting our teachers to be designing curriculum that is aligned with standards. And so you will see a shift moving from paying textbook publishers to paying our local teachers to be doing that that work. Smartboard replacement cycle. Right now, we have $40,000. You can see it's in the, going to be in there for three years. This is something that we will need to revalue, reevaluate as we're finalizing kind of what that replacement is going to look like. There may need to be some tweaks to it. And then there are some dollars in there for elementary and high school devices. And then you have each of the building budgets of $10,000. Both of the principals have some flexibility with how they use those dollars. And so you can see that total for operating capital, we will have about an $11,000 surplus from what our original fund balance or beginning fund balance was. Questions on operating capital? You're still all awake, right? Yes, okay, good. So then let's continue on in Fund Five. Reserve for devices, you can just take a look and see kind of how my math is working out, why we're doing what we're doing. We are setting aside $60,000 a year for this. Our expected budget amount is sixty two, one forty. That is actually a little high from from where we're actually what we're experiencing now. The reality is, whether it be Chromebooks or iPads, some of these things are coming down slightly in cost as the technology grows as well. So that's where we're setting, that's why we're setting the $60,000 aside. And restricted for LTFM. Again, now this is our long term facility maintenance. I can just run through these highlights for twenty twenty one. Elementary school. So if you are on the east wing, the east side of the elementary building, the hallway that runs north, south, the north end is the entrance by the kindergarten classrooms, the south end is the entrance by the third grade classrooms, and it goes out to the playground. Both those doors are getting to the point where the end, their end of life, they're rusting, they're they're drafty. So we are planning on moving forward with replacing those two entrances this summer. That is, that twenty thousand four sixty eight is a firm quote that we have in hand, ready to execute. You can see the rough repair on line thirty nine for eighty five, three, three, three. That's been approved by the board at the April meeting. The upgrades of fields are in there. Our fifty five hundred to the the weeding folks out of New London that come in and spray our grounds. Sink replacement here at the middle school, the middle school sinks are scheduled to be replaced. And so that is in there. And we have the water coils expenditure done and reported, I believe it was in April at the work session about some water coil leaks. That's where where we're going to pay for those. So you can see that's really the those up above line seventy four, that's all the stuff that is really kind of up for debate as far as what projects to do. Everything else after this, these are annual ongoing expenses that we continue to pay a portion out of long term facility maintenance. Next year, we are on tap to spend about $234,000 and our revenue for next year is about $388,000. Which is good, because as you start looking at the years as we progress out, you can see some bigger purchases that are out there that we are are planning for as we we move along this this long term facility maintenance budget. Questions with long term facility maintenance? Okay. The tech levy. So right now you can see what's all in the tech levy. Our tech integrationists and our tech director are are in there. Obviously, if we can, if we can sell a portion of our tech director or network administrator's contract to a neighboring district, what we would then do is put more of our tech specific positions in here. So we are spending these dollars. It's going to free up savings in our general fund is is how it would work. The rest of these are are pretty straightforward. Our steam instructor, we have individual who does a lot of steam instruction at the elementary school. A portion of that salary is in here. Our makerspace facilitator, a portion is in here, a portion of it is in the Dylan funds. Our tech check, if there's items that are associated with our servers or network that our network administrator can't handle, tech check is the firm that we use. We're budgeting fifteen thousand. That's been close. I don't know this year that we're going to hit fifteen thousand, but that's been a pretty much an average of what we have been using them for. And then a lot of these then are just annual expenses moving forward. I do want to call your attention to Kajit on line thirty five. That twenty five fifty will be a one time expense. This is bringing in additional hotspots that we wanted to bring in with distance learning and the such. So it will be a one time expense. You won't see that one being carried over as we move forward. Questions? Okay. The vehicle purchase, I'm not going to go into that. The moral of the story is we do not have any purchase, vehicles up for purchase for school year twenty twenty one. We will still set aside our $20,000 in order to make sure that cycle stays up. Because there are some years where we have to purchase multiple vehicles, so we do have to build that that balance up in order to accommodate those expenses. But we will not be actually purchasing any vehicles out of the twenty twenty, during the twenty twenty one school year. Lastly, I just want to bring your attention to Fund Six. We talked about this when we sold our bonds. This is something that you're going to see large deficits moving forward. When we sold the bonds in nineteen twenty, we had a huge surplus of infusion of cash to the tune of sixteen million, ninety thousand dollars. Now, over the course of twenty twenty one and a little bit into twenty one, twenty two, you're going to see that sixteen million dollars be spent. So if you look at this on line seventy one, we are anticipating, if it goes by UNESCO's pay schedule that they provided us, we're anticipating almost nine point two million dollars being paid out during the twenty twenty one school year for our facility project. That would leave us with about one point two million dollars would be left over for entering the twenty one, twenty two school year. If you click on that Fund Six link, you can go to that tab in the the workbook. But you can see there are the pieces in there. A lot of it is based on UNESCO's schedule. And then we also have our CTE FF and E budget coming together. Once I actually have that finalized, which I'm hoping to is here in the next week or two, I will bring that to our June work session and you guys can take a peek at that. We can talk more about what that CTE equipment would look like. And that's also something where that the gala funds could also play a role in the that FF and E budget as well. So right now, as we sit today, this is where the preliminary budget is sitting. Again, you know, we're we're gonna, right now, we're at one point seven five two. I think that's going to tick up a little bit more. Probably closer to, you know, one point seven seven two or so, about $20,000 should go to that. So we're hanging around that one point eight number. I know it is slightly less than one point eight million, but we're we're right in that ballpark. But this is kind of where things are at as we sit here today. Questions about budget? Okay. We will talk one last time about budget at the June work session. And then from there on the business meeting in June, I will be asking the board to approve a preliminary budget. By statute, we have to have a preliminary budget by June thirtieth. Before we enter the new fiscal year, we need our preliminary budget approved. So if, after tonight, if you're reviewing something and if you have questions, by all means, call, text, email, and I will try to get whatever information you need as far as the budget is concerned. Can we roll right to the next one? Okay, let's talk a little bit about the facility project update. I did email prior to the meeting, I did email the weekly UNESCO weekly update sheet. My intention is to get this out to the board each week. I did talk with Mike Jacobson last week. He was actually on site on Thursday and came and took some photos. I do believe there will be some pictures in the press this week about getting the project rolling and the such. I talked with Mike about running twice a month, running a project update. And so my intention is to take the first and second update from UNESCO of each month and combine those to put together a brief article with some photos that I can send to Mike and he can, if he has room, or he can do with what he wants with it. And then I will take the third and fourth update each month and I will condense those two together with a very brief overview and and some photos and Mike can can run that as well. So I guess my number one question is, one is the board thinking that that's sufficient for the press? It would be roughly twice a month is what would be in there. Be a combination, it'd probably be a lot of photos and a little bit of of words. Or is there a different expectation or thought when it comes to that communication in the in our local paper?
Just for me, I think it's a really good start. But I think we we, it's a long project. And if we start hearing things from the public or any of the board members, then we communicate with you and maybe we have to do something different. But personally, I think it's a good way to start. And I like the idea of getting to the press, to people there and being totally transparent about what's going on.
Okay.
Also, potentially, you could take and repurpose some of that information that everybody gets the press, whether it's people.
Maggie, can you just start, start over? I, I didn't hear the beginning of what you were saying. I'm sorry.
Sure. We could potentially repurpose some of that information as not everyone gets the press and either people could subscribe to be on like a construction newsletter or the existing list that you have from the school to just share that same information out. Because I think the press is awesome. I think that's a great idea, but we should utilize other channels as well.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up, Maggie. One of the other things I just wanted to, that you you jogged is, so Matt Dickhausen is starting a district newsletter. It's going to be very similar to what Mary and David do at each building level. So he was hoping to start one from a community ed slant. And so he and I talked and and actually, he's going to be starting just a district one. I think that's also an excellent place for all of that facility update material as well, would be a a good place for that. He was gonna end up sharing that newsletter with the chamber so they could push it out to their members. And I think there's a way that through that newsletter, I think Matt has a way that he can have people subscribe through community ed to be able to to send it out as well. So I think that'd be a good place for it as well.
Can we also put one on our website?
Yes, absolutely.
I love it when I can tell people, just go on our website. And they say, oh, you've got a website. And I say, of course, it's a lovely website. Go visit. But that that's perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
I was just gonna read it with Cheryl said in the website and and social media.
So the other thing then, as far as construction is concerned, the 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 big thing that's going on right now is demolition. I don't think, obviously, anybody who drives by the high school can see demolition, the the fence around the armory complex is all taken down. The parking lot on the north side has been all reclaimed. As soon as we're done with commencement on Sunday, they're going to go and reclaim everything that they left at that main entrance. They're gonna reclaim that as well and and then we'll keep, keep going. They're gonna, their goal is they want to get the new parking lot done and in place so that our first day of school, we have a parking lot that is available for students to park in. Now granted, it's going to be a ways away from the building. There's going to be a little bit of a walk to get to the building, but they will have a parking lot large enough in order to accommodate student parking along with staff parking. The safety or the 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 site fencing went up today. So if you drive by the high school tonight yet or tomorrow, you will see, you can kind of see the outline now as far as where is this addition going to go. They basically have the site fencing in place so that all of the construction will happen inside of the the fencing. The only thing The only thing that I can see right now that's going to happen outside of the current fencing that's up is the. Parking lot and site water retention. Contraption will be physically housed underneath the bike path. And that's actually what the the drop off right now is when you drive by. They're getting the the ground prep to be able to to put that. That site drainage. Holding tank in there. So yeah, it's it's good to to see things happening. The armory is ready to to get moving on the the demolition of that. And and that's good news. I am still patiently awaiting the the letter from from the Department of Education in in Washington. They assure me it's coming. I have inquired several times, I think she's actually sick of me inquiring because last week I got a. A preemptive email from from her saying, I haven't forgot about you. I know I said I was sending you a letter, it is coming. I read into it, please don't email me again, but it's so I I know that she still has Painsville on her mind. And and so I'm I'm well, I'm thinking that we will see that letter very, very soon. June first will be the a big day as far as some more workers coming on site. The asbestos abatement is scheduled to happen starting June first. I believe they're first going to go over, there's two small gaskets. That need to be removed at the elementary boiler room, so they're going to take care of that first. Then they're going to come over and work on the armory and then they're going to go from the armory to the the CTE space. There are several pipes that have been associated with the heating system. It's mostly elbow joints and stuff that have asbestos in the insulation insulation and stuff, so they're gonna hit that then as well. So we are, it's moving and it's it's nice to see work happening, it's nice to see. Action and and right now everything is is kind of going as planned, which is is good, so. Questions with the facility project? Okay, can I take D? All right, I just want to talk a little bit about, you know, where we're at right now and kind of just give an update for the board. I get nervous about this because there is just so much. Information that's going around that I I think it's really important for people to. When they whether it's on Twitter, whether it's on Facebook or whether it's on any form of social media. If you see something that is claiming that it's put out by the CDC. Go to the CDC website and find the original document. Because there's a lot of stuff that's being put out there right now that is really. It's it's not being productive. And I know there was one last week that was going around that had. A one cheater that was kind of a checklist of things that schools would need to do in order to reopen according to the CDC. That document isn't even available on the CDC website, that is somebody's interpretation of information that they either read or saw or heard. From who only knows where. So we are constantly monitoring it, we are participating with MDE and the Department of Health every week in phone calls. Our goal for the fall is to have students back on campus. That is our goal. Obviously, we are need to be a partner in this process. We cannot simply arbitrarily say Painsville is going to have school students back on campus. Without the help of the Department of Ed, without the help of public health. But we are working diligently to be able to come up with a plan. So that we can have students on campus. We need our school activities, we need a place for people to participate in all the social benefits of school. And we understand that, I think families are looking for that. So just know that's what we're after. We are going to go to whatever ends we need to be able to make that work. The one thing I took out of this end of the year distance learning. Is I think it proves that you can't just use a singular approach. There are kids that thrive in distance learning, there's kids that thrive in in person traditional instruction. I think the thing that I really take away is this experiment or forced experiment of distance learning. Has really reiterated to me is we need a system that allows access to all of those types of services. For all kids. And then we need to help kids and families to be able to really evaluate what is the best option for my child or for me as a student. And just because it might be best for my peer group. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's best for me. So that's going to be a work in progress. But I just want the board to know, we are adamantly, we're we are working every single day to figure out how can we have students back in school. But to think that we can just arbitrarily make that decision, I think that that is is. Is is a dangerous way to approach it, so. Questions at all? I mean, I. I know that I I was emailed today by a community member who was interested in starting a petition. You know, I I read the petition and I I thank the community member for communicating with me. I I appreciate that they were willing to share the petition and communicate and and have dialogue about it. There's not necessarily, there are points of that petition that I one hundred percent agree with. I want students back in our building. But I also want it to be safe for everybody to be able to be back in our building. And so I'm going to keep dialoguing about this petition, I think there's ways. That we can make sure that people understand we need guidance, we need to have timely guidance. And in order for us to be able to make the best decisions that we need to make locally. But I also want the person and I explained to them that it's just not reasonable. To expect Painsville to to go out and and implement a petition because there's. A certain percentage or number of community members that feel that way. It's not something that that necessarily is something that the school district is going to be able to accommodate. So it was a positive conversation and I I'm assuming some of you, if you haven't heard about the petition, you will be. I know the dialogue is continuing amongst some community members and some families in our district. And I think they're they're raising valid questions. Now let's just channel those to the appropriate decision makers. So that we can get timely guidance to be able to plan for the next school year. Questions or anything with COVID nineteen or pandemic or where things are at?
I just have a quick kind of rabbit trail question now that you said that. My sister in law homeschools in like an hour away from here, so it's a different district, but. She asked me if this was causing a lot of parents to realize that they could homeschool and if we're losing a bunch of students and I said, I know that it's probably the exact opposite. If you're anything like me, they're like, oh, my gosh, get the kids back in school. But have you heard anything along the lines more drastic like, you know, we don't. Need to bring our kids back to school or maybe just for safety or anything like that, they just don't want to or anything like that, just curious.
Yeah, and I've and I've been involved in a couple of conversations, but we've talked kind of around that general topic. I have not personally been contacted by families that are looking at homeschooling or. Experienced distance learning and believe now homeschooling is the the solution or or something that they're interested in. I know that there are a lot of school districts that are really nervous about that, that that is something that. They're really kind of almost fearful of is is this whole experiment going to mean that all of a sudden. The homeschooling market is going to completely blow up and. And districts are going to have lower enrollments and then have budget shortfalls that have to be managed and program reductions and all of that. I've not had families reach out to me and indicate that they're going to be homeschooling. I'm hearing a lot of the other side of the coin. About, you know, I didn't realize that this is everything that went on in schools, I didn't realize of, you know, the the scope. And what are you thinking, when are we going to have students back in school? But again, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that 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 there isn't a. A group in our community that does hold the thought that, you know, homeschooling is the way to go. Good news in Minnesota, at least they have to notify us. So we will know if that's where they go. But I've not I've not received a lot of that feedback up to this point. Any other questions? All right, then we just have the two upcoming meetings, so Tuesday, June ninth will be the Work and Learn six o'clock secondary boardroom. That I'm assuming will still be virtual as soon as we can get back to meeting in person. It would be my preference to just meet in person. So unless the board feels otherwise. No, as soon as I feel like there's guidance out there that will allow us to meet in person, we will make that shift back immediately. So I'm anticipating right now because I don't know any other way, I'm assuming June ninth will be a virtual meeting. And then June twenty third, we will have a regular business meeting at six PM. And we're I'm hopeful maybe there'll be some movement on that for that meeting, but that's a ways out.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Related to last topic of the meetings? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn.
I move the board to now adjourn.
I'll second.
And then we will have a rocall.
Ashley.
Thank you, I.
Jake.
Hi.
Rick. Thomas.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.